Good morning, everyone. I'm going to talk about the draft that we received of the recommendations for the West Palm Beach Downtown Parking Study. Let me put this in context, and we've shown this slide many times, I won't dwell on it, but you know, this is part of the Greater Mobility Plan and Mobility Fees Study that we're undertaking, and this is an important component part of it, along with the Gail Public Life Study. We're doing a citywide bicycle master plan and the Okeechobee Boulevard Corridor Study, as you recall. These are all component parts of it, and this is a really important part of that overall And so I'll go over some of the goals that we looked at when we started this parking study. We want to try, and I'm going to go in more detail, we want to redistribute the parking demand throughout the downtown. It's imbalanced, and I'm going to show you numbers on that. We want to create more options for people to park. And most importantly, one of the most important parts of this is we want to manage the curb more efficiently, and particularly in light of what the future holds. You know, we're looking at the future autonomous vehicles and Uber and Lyft and all these changes that are going to be in the way that people get around using automobiles or vans. And so we want to manage the drop-offs. We also want to look at freight loading and unloading, which has become very important, and I think everyone sees that this is just increasing, particularly in our downtown area. And of course, we want to reduce cruising. We want to be able to make it easy for people to find a place to park, make it convenient to find a place to park, and hopefully have people park once and not be moving their vehicle and hopefully not cruising around the block trying to find a spot, because that just creates congestion and uses resources.
It's funny, because you know, when you guys talked about that before, I didn't realize that a lot of people were doing that, that were doing cruising a lot, looking for a parking spot.
And it can be as much as 20%.
Apparently, that happens quite frequently.
Yeah, it can be as much as 20% of the traffic in the downtown area is due to cruising. So what if we could improve that? It would be dramatic. And of course, we want to do smart policies, and that's what you're going to see that is going to come out of this, where we see some really smart policy recommendations in regard to parking demand management, which then would impact the overall mobility study. And most importantly, we want to enhance the experience for people that work downtown, that live downtown, that visit downtown. We want them to have a good experience in regard to parking. So you're going to see some operational recommendations, some other things here that we think will improve their experience. We did a bunch of data collection, and you can see based on the colors, red is bad, because that means that we're almost fully utilizing the parking availability in those segments that are red, and this is in garage and on-street. And there's some other statistics here, but I think the takeaway, most important takeaway is that the city only controls 18% of the parking downtown, and I don't think people realize that, that 82% is controlled by private interests. And that the other thing is, is I don't think people realize the real imbalance downtown from garage to garage. I mean, if you take a look at Avernia, it's 99% utilized versus other garages that are far less utilized, like Columbus Garage. So there's an imbalance in the downtown, and so we're not effectively using the capacity of what we have out there.
Excuse me, Mr. Kelly. Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you. When you say 82% private, does that take out like the courthouse and county government, or are those included or just excluded completely from the study?
I'm sorry. This is all other, and so I shouldn't have said city. I mean, I shouldn't have said government. I should have said city parking.
You can say private, you too. So the 82% includes government and private?
Yeah. All other parking except for what city administration controls.
Thank you.
Thank you for correcting that. Okay, so we did a survey of what motivates parkers, and there's three, they classified them in three different ways: convenience parkers, reasonable parkers, and budget parkers. And this is pretty common sense. It's intuitive that first-time and frequent visitors that just want to come down, maybe do some short-term shopping or whatever, they stay for short periods of time, and then you got mid- and long-term parkers. And you know, employees or residents have been shown that they're willing to maybe go further away to park, because they're parking for longer periods of time and want to avoid high fees. So that's basically what we're looking at right now in regard to the areas, and we define those areas where these, where these convenience parkers versus budget parkers frequent. Key recommendations: off-street parking. One of the recommendations is reduce residential parking permits. Now, you know, that could be controversial, because a lot of the residential buildings that don't have extensive parking within their building, the residents park typically in our garages. What we're trying to do is incentivize them maybe to park in a different garage that would be further away or in a different location, so that we can free up the garages in the, you know, core downtown for, you know, for our visitors and guests and people that are conducting business. The second one is explore reserve.
Before I go on, Commissioner Ryan has another question.
Sure.
Thank you. So I just want to kind of get the lay of the land. When you look at the current residential parking users, they're using, they're obviously parking in garages closest to their location. We have a lot of vacant parcels in the core and around the, these existing residential parking permit users. So when you look at exploring, either moving them further away, do you also have a sense from Mr. Green's Building Department as to what's coming in and what might be available, and then see if we couldn't create more opportunities down the road as you do this versus doing it in a vacuum?
We're talking more about shared parking when people come in to talk to us. So yes.
Yes, we're, the answer is yes. We're, as the mayor said, we're looking at shared parking arrangements, but we're also looking at better utilization of the existing parking in the private garages. Like, for instance, I live in the Strand. At any given time, 70, only 70 or 80% of the spots are occupied. People that live in my condo actually rent space for a second vehicle in the city garage. Could we encourage, you know, like for instance, the Strand, to accommodate second spots for, you know, by promoting it or making arrangements with people that own spots that aren't utilizing them? So there's type of arrangements, and this is part of the discussion of how do we encourage shared parking and how do we encourage better utilization of the parking that we have. The next one is explore reserved parking rates. This has been asked for by the businesses, that there could be prime spots. It's been done in other communities. This is a little bit different to where we're saying, hey, could we reserve a spot? Somebody would, may pay more for that. It might be a prime spot, but it would promote businesses. We hear from the Class A office business sector that they need space and they need it convenient and that sort of thing. So could this be something that we could put in place that could benefit the business community? Here's one that sounds easy, but it's really hard, is to try to find a place to move two floors of evidence vehicle storage that's in the police PD garage on Sappadella. That garage, we're using, you know, a large percentage of that garage to store vehicles. It doesn't seem like a very effective use. So that's something we're going to concentrate on, is trying to get those cars out of there. They have to keep, and for those that don't understand that, we have to keep vehicles and evidence for the life of the term of the, of the people that are incarcerated in case there's an appeal. So if a car was used in a crime, that has to be, that has to be, that evidence has to be preserved for the life of their term of their serving, which is, could be 30 years. So you know, there's quite a few vehicles then that we have to be able to take care of, so. And then, most importantly, we want to increase availability for visitors, and we want to make it, again, I can't emphasize enough, we are really working to make it a more enjoyable experience for our visitors. We don't want visitors going away from here frustrated. You'll see some policies that we're going to suggest that are going to make it easier for visitors to park and make it more attractive, so.
So Scott, we're not suggesting, or this study isn't indicating that we have too little parking, we just have to better utilize the parking we have?
That's correct. In fact, I'm glad you brought that up, because within the city system, we're only utilizing 62% overall of the capacity that we have.
Oh, really?
Yes. And so that's well within guidelines that, you know, we have sufficient parking today. Of course, we have to start planning for the future, but today we have sufficient parking. It's just where it's distributed, so.
Maybe in the future, we won't need all that parking.
Well, and that's what we're hoping as we adapt, and that's some of the policies that we can put in place to reduce the need for parking, as well as, we have to start thinking about, do we really want to build a lot more parking in the future because of the fact that things are going to be different?
No.
Can I just?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just can't. We must not be the only municipality that deals with this evidence garage, storage vehicles. I mean, you've got the county, you've got other municipalities that have their own police.
Yeah.
It does sound like a business opportunity.
It does sound like, it does sound like a business opportunity.
The county's going to be storing those vehicles out, and I think it's going to be near Belgrade. They're creating a yard. We ask if we could share that yard, even though it's expensive to get them out there and back, but you don't use them very often. You know, you don't have to pull them in and out very often, and they don't have any availability there. So we're looking for off-site, less expensive real estate. This is the most expensive real estate you could store, you know, evidence in, obviously. So we're looking for opportunities. So one of the things that was definitely brought forward was, we need to do demand pricing, and this is what municipalities are going to, municipal governments are going to demand pricing, which means that the pricing will vary across the system, and it will be based on what the demand for that space is. And this does several things. Most importantly, it means that we will be able to free up spaces in some of the most desirable areas for visitors to come, and they won't have to cruise. If they want to come and do convenience shopping, there'll be spaces available for them. And our surveys indicate that they're willing to pay for that. They want the convenience, and so we need to be able to free up a percentage of our spaces in the most, in the downtown area for those convenience, for those people that want convenience. And these are typically visitors or people that just want to come down and shop. And what this means is that there's a benefit to our businesses, and it's, I think it's counterintuitive sometimes, but actually, if you do this and you charge effectively for parking and you spread the demand out, there's less congestion, but there's also that improved business. And this was recognized by Delray, because they went to free parking, and guess what? They're going to demand parking now. They discovered that it was causing them real concerns, and so everyone agreed down, most of the people down there agreed, that they should go to this demand-based pricing.
So we're going to have to do a lot of work with the people, the business owners and merchants on the street, because I don't think they get this.
Yeah, and you know, there's a lot of things that, there's a lot of outreach that has to be done. We've already been to the downtown merchants three times with meetings, and we've also been to the agencies that have the most parking demand, which is Palm Beach Atlantic, the county and related, you know, the areas related control. So those are the ones that are the highest demand, so we've met with them independently. We've also met with the Chamber of Commerce, and we need to have a lot more outreach, because there's some misunderstandings about, I believe, and you know, there can always be disagreement, but I think we need to do better education. We're not doing good enough, well enough in communicating. Let me give you a couple, for instance. Palm Beach Atlantic immediately, when we started talking about, hey, there's a recommendation that we charge for on-street parking, they immediately said, no, this is going to be very damaging to their college. Well, you know, Ed Davis, who's our parking administrator, couldn't be here today, but he managed a large university parking system, and he knows. He knows how to manage that, and so we're going to have them meeting with Ed to talk about what the advantages are of metering on-street parking. There's a huge advantage for them, for Palm Beach Atlantic, and to price their parking accordingly, because they have different prices for surface lots and their garages and whatever. And let's price all this accordingly to make it the best experience for their students and for visitors and that sort of thing. Yes, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Materiel.
Thank you. So I think it would be important for the commission to also have this meeting with Ed. And I know that Florida Atlantic and University of Florida, you know, they have parking stickers that they sell to their students, and they have specific places that they can use them. And they have, you know, the tickets that you get for parking in a spot without a sticker or for longer than you're supposed to are pretty substantial, but it still frees up the ability for those students to be able to know that this is the area where we can park. I'm not sure I agree with the metered parking in all areas of the city, and I think Palm Beach Atlantic brings in enough people that spend money in the city that we have to have that conversation as well. So when he is available, I'd like to know if he's already managed a large university campus style, and we're a downtown campus, it's a little bit unusual. I'd like to hear from him specifically what he plans to do in order to do metered parking. And I know it's a little bit more convenient now, because you can pay your meter from your phone, but I'd like to explore all the options and understand what he's done in the past.
Well, he will be working with Palm Beach Atlantic, and we'll let him proceed with that and then come back to you after they've straightened it up.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'd like to hear from him exactly what's, and it's, these are policy decisions, so I'd like to hear what he's suggesting, so that we get it right.
Well, I'm not really sure they're policy decisions, but let's let him work that out with Palm Beach Atlantic.
Another thing is that we've discussed extending the hours of parking enforcement in the downtown area right now. In city place, you know, it's extended till, I believe it's 11:00, but in the downtown area, parking is at 7:00 o'clock, it terminates. There's a lot of good reasons to extend that, but we've been listening, okay? And like, for instance, some of the merchants said, hey, there's some real good reasons maybe not to extend it to 11:00 or 12:00. Could we talk about, you know, I don't think they're objecting to extending it, but not all the way to 11:00. And one of the ones was, we don't want people getting in their car that have been drinking and trying to move their car, because they're worried, you know, about whether the meter's going to run out and that sort of thing. So we understand all that, and plus, the other factor is, some people leave their cars curbside, because they've had, you know, too much, too much to drink, and so, you know, you don't want to encourage those people to be driving. So these are things that we're listening, you know, and if there's things that we can do, we don't want to have adverse impacts by some of the changes that we're doing. So we're listening, and we think it's a real need to extend it because of the parking beyond 7:00, because what we're seeing is that 7:00 o'clock, all the employees go out and move their cars to the curb, and they're taking away from our visitors' availability. So you know, there's pluses and minuses to things, and you know, we'll work through these, obviously.
Commissioner Ryan's next. Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you. So you know, when I read the study, there's obviously a bunch of different recommendations related to different areas of goals and objectives. So it seems to me that as you continue to go through this, probably the first thing you do is the signage, right? So if you don't want people to park, but you have alternative parking for them, so it's that whole education that occurs before any of the changes go into place, I would assume.
Yeah, that's a really big piece, signage, because people don't know where the parking. And ultimately, if we get to the point where we can actually have, people can get on an app and find out where parking is available. I know we're working on that, and they'll be able to know where to go, where to find parking and...
I mean, as people go to restaurants, right, they know how to get to the restaurant, and what you want to do is be able, when they get there, instead of looking for their typical take-a-place on the street, but to look up and see that, hey, there's just, there's parking just right around the corner there. And if I were to do that, I'll save, you know, worry, time, and money. So I hope, I hope that that's one of the big and first things that we have, is a robust parking sign.
Well, I think it goes back to that technology piece, too. People know where parking spots are.
Right, as they...
Absolutely. Those are both, those are all good points, so.
Commissioner Materiel?
Thank you. I always, I think it's always going to be a difficult conversation with business owners, whether they're retail or whether they're restaurants. Everybody wants to know that their clients can find them easily, park close by, come in, and they don't, what they last thing they want to hear is, I tried to come by last Saturday, but I couldn't find a parking spot. And one of the things you just said troubles me, that their employees are moving. So employee parking and having employee, sort of some way of identifying that it's an employee car, they should not be taking the prime spots. And that's a conversation that I hope that the city is going to engage in with the business owners.
Yeah, we have talked with them about that a lot, and you know, I think there's still people that don't really get that. I think, you know, we all got an email from Morris at O'Shea's that, you know, don't raise parking rates and, you know.
Well, and it's...
And you know, it's...
It's not just downtown.
No.
And I know that we're not addressing just downtown. I know that there are employees, restaurants use a lot of employees, and when we're getting on that fringe of downtown, those restaurant employees, even though they're told not to, are parking on the residential streets, and it's frustrating to the residents, too. So some conversation about how to identify an employee car and know that those businesses have a location for those employees to park is important. And you only have to explain it to them one time. Once they understand that that's what they have to do, we'll stop getting complaints, and there'll be open spaces in our residential areas as well, even behind, they're still doing it, even behind the convention center.
Yeah, we drove through there the other day, and there were lots of people parked that...
Yes, it's amazing, actually.
And that's still, yeah, but, and...
But it ain't a big deal, is workers, construction workers are parking, like for instance, Palm Beach Atlantic.
Yeah.
We get complaints because you got construction workers parking on the curb. Well, you know, this is part of what we're discussing, is that, hey, if we had, if we had metered, it wouldn't, you know, they wouldn't be parking there. So can we, but on the other hand, we got to provide reasonable parking accommodations for them, and where will that be? And so that's part of this discussion, so.
Okay, go ahead, Scott.
Oh, the last thing is misuse of on-street loading. This is becoming a huge issue. You know, you see vehicles that are just blocking traffic. They stop in the middle of a lane. It's just really difficult at this point.
Makes me crazy.
So we've got to do a better job of regulating that and providing points on the curb for them to be able to unload. You just can't say, hey, you just can't park there. They got to unload somewhere, so we've got to look at where good, smart policies are on unloading, so.
Go ahead, Paul.
Thank you. So just to follow up on the meetings that you have been having with the merchants, the last one that I was able to attend, Sean had said that they were going to reach out as a, you know, an organization or as a group to like Chaney Brothers and the Bush, all of the different deliveries. They're all similar trucks and try to coordinate timing. Is that moving forward? Are they...
Yeah, they've been working on that, but beyond that, we're looking at ourselves contacting them to try to figure out what are other cities doing in regard to unloading, and can we provide curbside space for that unloading activity, and can we restrict the hours of that, so it doesn't cause issues? So we're also doing that.
Good. Just a minute, Scott.
Before you go any further, Scott, can you explain to us what is the rule about parking lots? You know, there's a lot of, there are some empty, there's some empty land, and I know it's owned by private owners, but what's the rule for parking on those locations? Do they have to be paved in order to be a parking lot?
Yes.
So the only way to do it is just reg, is like create a parking lot, which is a pretty expensive endeavor?
Well, and if it's not zoned properly, you can't just create a new parking lot, a surface lot in the downtown area.
For temporary parking, it has to be.
And we're not saying that we need more parking lots in downtown.
We're saying better utilized.
I'm thinking about deliveries.
Well, and we need to better utilize the space, and like for instance, on, you know, Sunfest, you know, where we get complaints because, but it's just a distribution of those, of that parking. There's plenty of parking even during Sunfest, the biggest events. And by the way, I don't know, you know, if I've mentioned this, but one of the big things is that we're also studied event parking and what we can do better for event parking, because we have people come down here, they get very frustrated because of the congestion.
Well, because they want to park right next to the event.
Yeah, but if we can provide, you know, some transit or whatever, that's what we're looking at, is how better to manage these events effectively. This next one, I'll try to move on, extend meter hours of enforcement, as I mentioned, I already went through that, implement demand-based pricing. This is on the Don Shoup theory, that you want 15% of the spaces available for people to be able, so they don't have to cruise, so they can conveniently get to where they're trying to get to, and you want to price it accordingly. So that's one of the things that we're looking at. Improve utilization and review of our processes, and this also includes operationally. We want to make our garages more inviting. We hear stories that they seem like they're dark, maybe they don't feel safe, that people utilize them. We think this is a perception, because we don't see evidence that there's really a lot of criminal activity that are occurring, but it's a perception issue. But how do we end up, you know, making sure that people feel safe in our garages? Event parking, as I brought forward, I won't talk too much more about this, but you know, some of the larger events, people all want to park in the Banyan Street Garage, and it becomes incredibly congested. And so can we entice people to park in a lot that's further away and then provide some kind of transit options for them? And also, just the organization of this, of these events, to where we get people out of the garages easier and faster. We may, you know, switch some of the roads to one-way during events, that sort of thing. You know, what can we do to make it more effective?
I think that that's a great possibility for testing our autonomous 15-passenger van.
Yes.
We could pick people up at the, at the distant garage and bring them in.
Absolutely. And so we're also going to, also work with private facilities, and hopefully, we're going to all work together on a tiered parking rate structure, particularly for events, so that we would charge more in the downtown area. Right now, we charge the same whether, wherever you're at. It could be $20 on some events, $5 on other events, but we charge throughout the same. Well, it doesn't make any sense, you're going to charge $20. Where are they going to go park if it's, you know, flat across, all across the system? So we're looking at a rate structure that has the highest rates in the most convenient garages and less out in other areas. And we're going to work with the private lots as well. So one of the things that came up was, which we think is a very important, and this is a very important policy objective, and we've been working with, with planning, and we've also brought this up to a number of the stakeholders, a couple of policy objectives. Number one is that we would migrate from parking minimums to parking maximums. Okay, so when I say parking minimums, right now, the zoning code requires that you have to build so many spaces for when you build a building. And what that does is encourages more people to park. It's expensive, particularly if you want affordable housing, because they have to build the spaces for the parking, whether they need it or not. So what we're looking at is encouraging people not to overbuild on parking, but to do things such as shared parking, or we, we all work together to provide options for them. And when I say options, it's better transit, it's better locations, as I mentioned, spread that demand out across the system. We have, we have some capacity that we could utilize. So how do we effectively do that and create what we call parking maximum? Now, with that said... Now, with that said, we also hear that certain types of businesses have to have parking, and they want a higher level of parking. So what the proposal is, is that we would look at a soft and a hard maximum, the hard maximum being a lot higher than the soft maximum. For those that want to exceed the soft maximum, they would mitigate the impact. So if they're going to provide more parking and create more congestion because of the parking, then they would help mitigate that impact of the additional parking that they need. So this wouldn't prevent people from having higher parking levels, but they would have to mitigate the impact. We think this is smart policy moving forwards.
Commissioner Mataro?
What does that mean, Scott? Mitigate, pay more?
They would provide, and as you can see here, here's a whole list of activities that's been suggested, or we could, they could pay into a fund perhaps, where it would pay for transit, or other options to reduce, offset their additional congestion. They would pay into something so that we could provide higher levels of transit, and we could reduce the congestion elsewhere. So, you know, you would offset it, so that you wouldn't increase congestion within the city, so.
Mayor, can we, can we get a copy of this? Because I don't think it's just me.
I can't read it.
It's always really difficult to read. But if you could send us a copy of this when you're done, that would be really helpful.
No, we, we have sent a copy out, and I'll send a copy of the presentation, and we also sent a copy of the draft plan out.
Yeah, you have a copy of the study.
But we'll get it to you again, so. The other thing I think is important is enforcement of parking rates. We hear visitors, first time here, they get confused about where to park, you know, we don't want them to have a bad experience. So we're talking about changing our parking enforcement rates, so that if this is your first offense, you don't get charged much. You know, it's just more of a warning-type thing versus someone that has three and four occurrences, they should get charged higher because they're habitually not following the rules and creating issues for people. So that's what we're looking at, is increasing the fees for those that habitually abuse the system versus ones that, you know, first offense, you shouldn't be charged a lot. We don't want, we don't want people to have a bad experience. And out of this, as part of
Scott, excuse me. Commissioner Muffin?
Thanks. I can remember the Parking Administration, a few years ago, when you got a first fine, first parking ticket, when you, when you went in to pay it, they gave you about the same amount in parking, like a parking card. It was, it was really very understanding and a nice way to do it, so I don't know if you're going to look into that again.
Well, and that's part of what we're talking about. We want to be viewed, perceived as being friendly and helpful to people, not like we got you, you know, type thing. So we're, we're looking at what policies we can put in place to, you know, display a more, a better perception of parking enforcement. What I think's interesting is that these are a bunch of capital improvements that have been suggested, that have come out of the mobility study, that will also help with parking. And like, I mean, something as simple as bike parking. You know, signage and wayfinding is what was brought up. That's probably one of the most important things we can do, is better signage and wayfinding. And I won't go into all these, but there's a lot of things that we could do that could improve the parking experience and make it easier for people to get around, so. And
Good.
That's it. So
Thank you.
A couple other things real quick, because I have to go at eleven-thirty to have a call, because I know you all have inquired about this, and we're going to have a call in regard to southbound Flagler left-hand turn onto Okeechobee. You know, it's been a long time that this has been studied. The county asked to study it.
It was closed when they started working on the bridge, and we were told it would be open when the bridge was done.
And it's still not open. So we're having a conference call at eleven-thirty, so I may have to leave, so I wanted to let everyone know that, and therefore, there's another subject that I wanted just to break the ice on, is that there's a project that's under consideration that would be potentially funded by the CRA and the city, and it has to do with streetscape on Clematis. This has been discussed for many, many years. I think it was probably eight to ten years ago, there was a proposal to improve the streetscape. What does that mean?
And more recently than that. We probably, we had a proposal come to us when I was mayor, so.
Yeah, and not only, yeah. And not only that, but Gail felt that this was very important as they were doing their study of the downtown, that this was important, that we improved the streetscape for various reasons. One is shade, which is critical to the success of the street, that we make sure we have shade. But also, we want to look at, could we provide more cafe-type seating? Is that reasonable? And is that worth a trade-off on parking? Because oftentimes, that means that you would have less parking spaces available, but more outdoor cafe seating, and manage that differently. So, you know, this is discussions we're going to have. The reason I want to bring it forward is because we started looking at the timeframes. If this project is viable and if we move forward with this project, we need to be under construction by summer, because we don't want to do this type of construction during season. Some of the constraints that we've placed on this project are that we don't want a lot of disruption. We want to keep businesses open, we want to keep traffic, a certain amount of traffic open during the construction, so that's a constraint. And we also want to do it at a reasonable cost, as well as, you know, not disturb a lot of the utilities and whatever, because then it becomes a lot, a very complicated project. So we're looking at doing it without disturbing drainage and other utility services, so.
So when we get to the point of having the actual design, we'll bring it back to the commission.
That's correct, and we anticipate sometime in January, so.
Commissioner?
I just want to encourage, I know I don't have to say this, because I know you'll do it, but I want to encourage the conversation with the restaurant owners. I'm sure if their bottom lines increase because they have cafe seating, that's worth giving up the parking. And if there's literally no parking on Clematis, it really just forces everybody to find different locations, which isn't a bad thing, but it's, you know, fear, fear of change.
We've already started those conversations with them, and
How's it, how's it going?
It's better than we thought, right? They were, they have been more accepting.
And we're developing a, we're going to develop a outreach program. You know, I thought the outreach program on the mobility plan was well-received, and we're doing something very similar here. And also, you know, we just had some very brief preliminary conversations with some of the merchants, you know, just to, you know, kind of feel it out, and it seems like people, it's been better received than what I imagined, so.